Hi.
Hi there, Catherine here. Meeting is called to order. Hi, Bill. Bill, I actually have printed copies of the budget and the capital improvement plan for you here. And you can see we've been pretty busy. The so you you have copies. I did find actually Christina already found typo that I have in there and we'll get that corrected. So but it's not in a place that's all that important. The okay, so let me just look at our agenda. Members present, all the selectmen are present. We have some guests. And do me a favor and say your names and your spelling.
Viny, Lamonica, L A, capital M O N I C A.
And?
Ron, R O N, Lamonica, L A, M O N I C A.
Got that. Okay, they are siblings. So. So, um, well, if I understand correctly, you're here for hear from the public?
Yes.
And you're going to give us an update on the music?
Yes, I am.
Super.
So I'm here to read a prepared statement on behalf of the band. My goal is to keep our selectmen, office administrator and town as a whole updated on the goings on of our fantastic group. My name is Vinnie Lamonica and I'm the director of the band. The band currently has 22 members. Throughout the year, I have the distinct privilege of standing beside the band as those 22 members share their music with the community, both here in Ashford and in several surrounding towns. This year, we are looking forward to the seven concerts. We already have scheduled the two we are finalizing and two other performances I'm waiting to schedule, not even including the holiday season. As an outsider, non-member director of the band, I have two primary goals. The first one is the more clear one with the 22 members of the band to spread beautiful, powerful, exciting and necessary music. Like the Ashford Arts Council, the Babcock Cornet Band is a cultural institution that brings people in from far away and represents the best part of things. My second goal, which is more important for me as somebody outside the membership of the band is preservation. So I have a few short term and long long term targets to solidify the band's standing in legacy. The first one is continuing to solidify the approach to Babcock Cornet Band rehearsals. I had a meeting earlier this year during which we discussed proactive communication and why Nolan Memorial Hall is the safest and most appropriate home for the band, especially after COVID. The band rehearses on Sunday afternoon, setting aside 1:30 to four, so that we can share the best music possible with our community. While many events can be flexible, the fixed rehearsals are difficult to move with 22 band members and me. Nolan Hall is perfect gathering space for so many organizations and we love to share it with everyone. But we want to know when the sharing will happen, so we don't arrive to find the hall in use. Part of my meeting involved a discussion of procedure. Somebody would like to use Nolan Hall during one of our blocks and wants to reserve it through Christine, the office administrator. We simply ask that we are given the chance to reach out to the senior center. If they're available, we are so happy to move there. They're wonderful to us and we can be as flexible as possible. If it's not available, we like to have a discussion about the flexibility of the other group. Sometimes any events at 1:30 instead of two or starting at 4:30 instead of 3:30 makes a world of difference for us. I sent an email for your request with a list of rehearsal dates for 2024. I sent an email two more times and no response. I do have to edit this part as I received an email today after work from Christine. So thank you, Christine, clarifying one date in June. So I do know that she has seen this. I've already seen in the minutes for an organization that Nolan Hall was reserved for a weekend and we weren't notified. It is a weekend, we have a rehearsal. It's a group that absolutely deserves the space, but I'm hoping that the senior center is available since it wasn't discussed with me. So I'll be reaching out to them. In addition to sending another email, which I'm about to do, I have hard copies here, the rehearsal schedule for the board of selectmen, just because I want to make sure everyone has it, which I hope will be included in the meeting minutes for the people of the town of Ashford to have. I look forward to having positive, productive and proactive communication. And I believe that carving out this approach will be a path to having the Babcock Cornet Band continue to be a point of pride, historic cultural institution of our wonderful town of Ashford. If anybody has any questions, would like to discuss dates or involving the band, I can be reached at babcockband@gmail.com.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Here's this. Here's that and Bill, I will email you your copy.
I will send you a response.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
To your write-up. Um, you need to know that we have been up to here in budget.
Yeah.
Okay, with limited resources. So, um, but I will send a response because there are some things that I will probably challenge you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. And yes, we share the hall with everyone.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? I'm trying to think if we have. No, I don't think so. Well, actually, Joe, I'm sorry I missed you at the beginning of the meeting. That's Joe Hendrick. Joe, did you have something you wanted to share? Hi, Joe. I see you're off mute, but I can't hear you. Joe, are you there? So Joe and I have been working together on broadband issues because we have an underserved community. And he's been pivotal in providing me with information about programs that the state is doing in relation to that. And he's been attending a number of them. So I'll just say from this end of the room, I appreciate his support and support for the other people in the town. So, um, Joe, anytime you want to come before our board and talk, ah, there you are. Please feel free.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We can see you too.
Okay. All right. I I don't have anything prepared to say today. Thank you, Catherine, for mentioning the work on the broadband. It's a. And I know that you've collected some data on people in town who are not getting the kind of access that's the target from the state and the federal government. And I look forward to sharing what I've learned at the meetings with the state DEEP. It's not something that I think is appropriate right now for. It's a lot of detail.
Okay.
But thank you for listening. And I'm going to mute again.
Okay. And just to let you know, Joe, I've only had, I think, a total of four individuals plus yourself who have actually responded to the survey. However, what I see is what DEP already has out there about the amount of service that we have in our town percentage-wise. So I will talk with you offline to kind of go through those details and see if that can be used as part of our argument for ensuring that the state does more for us.
Great.
Okay. Uh, anybody else for persons to be heard? Okay, moving merrily along. We have acceptance of the minutes of regular meetings, of the regular meeting of February 20th, 2024. Has anybody had the opportunity to look to look at those minutes?
I've looked at them.
You good with them? Okay, Roger moves to accept.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Uh, and I just want to compliment Chris because she's doing a very nice job of providing the information, making sure that we get this documented. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And I have, I have a set of minutes that I'm late on, well, not late, they're from last week, but I have to work on those and get approval for those. Okay. Hear from boards, commissions, committees. Anybody have anything to say? I will tell you, I can't remember if I've already told you, but the Sexton has provided some information on some improvements for some of our cemeteries. And I'll share them at another later date. Old business, Ashford School Roof Replacements Projects Update. So we just had a meeting that ended a few minutes ago.
Catherine.
Yeah.
Excuse me, did you skip first selectmen's briefing or was that it about the second?
Oh, no, I did. Actually, most of what's on here relates to that. However, what I would say is that we worked into the, I worked into the wee hours on that budget. Uh, it was provided to the Board of Finance. Like I said, Bill, I have a copy here for you. I can send it electronically. I just didn't know if you wanted to read it that way.
If you could put a hard copy in my box, I'll certainly.
You bet.
Swing in and pick it up.
You bet.
I I get them electronically and I've been getting what Chris has been sending me electronically, but I'm having trouble with my personal printer. So.
Yeah.
You could put a hard copy just in my box, that'd be helpful.
So overall, with everything, it is a. Well, what did happen is Christina Davis, she's pretty sharp. She caught a typo, a set of typos in one line that I have to correct or provide, at least let you know what it is. But the general government proposed budget is $4,330,291. It's an increase of $491,051, which is 12.79%. I do believe.
Would you say that dollar figure again, please?
The increase is 4,91051. So we understand that this is a super high increase. The insurance rate we went with was 29.5% because that's all we've heard from the carrier is to quote what the quote was as of March 1st.
Yeah, Catherine, I'm sorry, I just, I'm writing slower than you're talking, but the percent of increase for the government budget is 12.
Point 79.
Point 79. Thank you, sorry.
Yeah. It was interesting, I was just talking with Jim Rupert and his budget increase last year was 10. something percent or something along those lines. Um, I don't think we've had one this large, but we have a number of factors that play into it. Um. Let's just see, so key areas were contractual increases in employee wages for fiscal year 2024 and 2025. Insurance went up, I believe, 100,000. The. Let me go over here. The. Key areas of increase were, again, wages for that. And what's reflected in the wages for 2025 are the increases for 2024 and 25. In the past, we've always signed the contract after the municipal vote on the budget. And so we didn't show the increases in that budget. So this time we did sign a three-year contract, so we already know what their rate is going to be for 2025. And we had to put the information in for 2024 as well, since we were typically running a year late on getting that information in. Highway Public Works, their staff, it's an 81,779 increase due to custodian transfer station attendant and part some, there's some part-time administrative support. That doesn't cover all of the 81.7 increase, but it's, those are the heftier pieces of it. DPW, we've got a 21% increase, that's for truck, truck parts and repairs, that's 10,000. Equipment parts and repairs, that's 10,000 and tools, just for 1,000. Registrar voters, I did talk with the both the registrars and was able to bring that down to an 8,588 increase, which is two. You know how they had two, they had three workers throughout the year? This is with two that are registrars or assistant registrars.
Wednesdays.
Deputy registrars. On an ongoing basis, so that cut 3,000 from that. The employee benefits is 114,176 dollar increase because of the 29% and our add of a person to DPW plus some status changes from individual to family. So we stuck with the 29.5% because we don't know what it's really going to be. And that's what was quoted last. Fire department is a 201,450 dollar increase. That's for full, adds two full-time firefighters slash EMTs, a dollar an hour increase to paid staff and eight PTO days for paid staff. Recreation Fund, we have a $17,338 increase. That includes salary and benefits, contractual services and mowing. And what was found during the audit for 2000, year in 2023, because that was just done, completed, was that the Recreation Fund has again run into a deficit. So we are working on how to prevent that going forward and also how to increase the number and types and revenues from programs that we offer. And so we're working with the rec director and the chair of the rec commission, the Parks and Rec Commission on that. So, but it did come up in the audit. Then I have expense summaries by department, you know, a total line summary. I do have an error in here that will, I'll take care of, but all the rest of the information is correct. So we have expense detail by department. We have a revenue by a summary by department and or type of revenue. And we also have some detail on that. In addition, the plan of concert, a plan of bear with me. Capital Improvement Projects Plan. We have that document as well, Bill, so you'll have that. And by the way, one thing I was able to do was kind of lay out in the general government budget, some groupings in a general pie chart, if you will. So they are general government management, which includes not only all of the departments in terms of their management, so to speak, and what they need for supplies, those kinds of things, but also the boards, commission and commissions. So that's all covered in the general government management total because it reflects how we manage our town. Then insurance and benefits, well, the general government management was 24,000, 24.1%. Insurance and benefits were 14.7%. Buildings and utilities is another category, that was 4.5%. Community programs and services, that was 12.1% and that includes senior center and Parks and Rec. Might have a couple of other things, oh, the area agencies as well. And then public safety is 15.8% and that includes the fire department, the EMD and the fire marshal. And DPW Public Works is 18%. That covers all of that and the transfer station is another slice of the pie at 8.5%. And GL and other are 2.4%. So it was a way to kind of group things, you know, like things together for people to consider. On the Capital Improvement Projects Plan, as was discussed and agreed to with the Boris, within the Board of Selectmen, we took off the bear with me, the resurfacing of the basketball courts. And with the intent, and I made no reference to ARPA in this, with the intent of, I believe, holding a special town meeting to address that ARPA item, the ARPA item for the, bear with me.
Web page.
Thank you, website. And also, thank you, for the fire department. Some monies that they want to use, they were able to get a grant and so they took care of something. And now they want to use the monies that were approved for something else. So those are the three things that I know of that we would want to put in that special town meeting and get that taken care of so people can move on. So in the meantime, with the we have here, the Capital Improvement Projects Budget. The total is, it includes the $4 million portion of the school roof in the next fiscal year and that, so the total is 4,830,722. So it's really 830,722 in other items. And it will be interesting to see how the Board of Finance wants to deal with that. And.
Excuse me, have we been able to establish what Sheri's got for a balance? Yvonne expended out of the fund balance, out of the.
What I did provide was something that I got from Sherry Susie.
Yeah.
Which is the schedule of authorized capital projects and purchases, capital non-recurring. Which is the schedule of authorized capital projects and purchases, uh, Capital Non-Recurring Fund for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. And I have provided that to the Board of Finance. Uh, but for capital authorizations carried forward, it shows one million, nine hundred seventy-four thousand, twenty-eight dollars. So, I think, uh, when all is said and done, you kind of have to look at the paper to see what's laid out there.
Okay.
Yeah, and you'll see, um, that, uh, which ones were carried forward from before, which I think will be helpful. Also, on the, uh, Capital Improvement Plan, I laid out, uh, the plan based upon the items there, and so, you know, Public Works, Revow, Fire Department, Ashford School and Town Projects, and then, uh, the funding sources, so I made a couple of pie charts for that, make it a little more illustrative. All right. So, uh, like I said, I had a type, uh, three typos on one line uh, in a place that's not, that just made Christina take a second look, uh, that I will correct. But otherwise, everything was based upon what Sherri Susi gave me, she had downloaded from the system, and I actually, uh, had her drop it into Excel, and that's what I worked from for the detail. So, I just happened to type in the wrong numbers in a summary line. Uh, but the right numbers are there and reflected in the overall budget increase. That's that. Um, let me stop and think. I haven't had the opportunity, although we're working on it, to get the letter drafted uh, and provide the information to the people who, uh, um, will receive the ARPA grants, our local businesses. So, I'll be doing that over the next few days, I just was really focused on the budget, to be frank handed. And Bill, I know, I know you know what that's like.
Absolutely.
It is hell.
I've noticed the lights not in the office late every night.
Oh, you have?
I know you've been busy, busy, busy.
Yes, you would not believe. Anyway-
Oh, I would.
Uh, okay, so, I'm trying to think, and I need to, uh, do some, uh, some other follow-ups too. So, uh, I don't think I have anything more of substance to report. I would like to get to these other items that are under Old Business, so unless you have some questions about anything, I'll move on.
No, the only thing, and I could bring it up later, but I, I'm wondering, can Roger and I, maybe Roger already get a, get a copy of the draft audit report?
You betcha. I didn't have one. Incredibly enough, I got one on, uh, I found out what the revenues were on Wednesday.
Okay.
And Sherri was-
As you know, the Board of Selectmen would get them the same time the Board of Finance.
Well, that's what I thought.
That's how it's always been, and, and I'm assuming in that draft report, there's also a, a draft management letter from the auditor?
There is, we did, we did get dinged on one thing, which had to do with C-Grant, apparently the reporting for the Steve Grant was to be quarterly. We did it basically annually, uh, just didn't, just didn't catch it. And that's something easily remedied, and to my own knowledge, that was the only ding, if you will, that we had in the report. Based upon me getting one section of the report, so far.
Good. That's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you. The, uh, okay, going down to Old Business now, skipping around. Ashford School Roof Replacements Projects Update, we met with the Building Committee today, and, uh, Chris, and also the solar person. And it was a good, really good meeting, we talked through, uh, aspects of, uh, what the, uh, what bills need to be paid now. So, we have, uh, ad approval of school roof project bills. Uh, we have Hubbard and Rosa for one, eleven thousand, five hundred dollars. We have MHR Development for nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. So, um, I think that would require two motions. We'll approve one, and, you know, I'm assuming we'll approve them. Uh, the meeting today was, uh, to go through the engineering report, there, uh, it's in draft form, there's some more things that need to be added to it to also, um, bear with me. Uh, we went, actually, we went through a number of things in detail, uh, we, in talking with the solar uh, person, we found that there may be an opportunity to save some more money, we're going to pursue, uh, looking at a couple of alternatives on how we do that. And, um, it's not laid out yet, but we're going to have a meeting with that person, with Tom, our, um, architect, uh, and, uh, the school superintendent, and work through, um, what those, uh, what those alternatives are, and that has-
Catherine, the last time we talked about the, uh, the roof and, and solar panels, I think we were all a little surprised that apparently the architect hadn't planned or his plans didn't coordinate with the installation of the solar panels.
I think we're doing-
Has that, has that been resolved?
I think we're doing better on that, like, like I said, today we had them together. And we will be having another meeting when the engineering report, uh, which is supposed to be completed over the next few days, when that is, is together. And, uh, we're also going to have a meeting with the state with, through the solar person, and forgive me, his name escapes me at the moment.
Mark Robbins.
Marx Robbins, thank you, again. Uh, he's going to set up a meeting with the state to talk through aspects of solar and, uh, what opportunities we have there. Uh, and we'll have Tom, the, uh, architect at that meeting, we'll have the-
Good.
We'll have the right people at the meeting. Uh, Jim Rupert was here as well, he was very helpful. I, it's a, a great that he is actually working with us, and has had such a strong role on that committee. So, what I would like to do is, I would like to get a motion to, uh, approve uh, school roof project bills, uh, one for Hubbard and Rosa for eleven thousand, five hundred, and, uh, the other for MHR Development at the nine ninety-eight and ninety-eight cents.
I will make that motion to be paid out of the Capital Improvement Funds.
CNR.
That it's so designated.
Okay, and the motion is for the first one, Hubbard and Rosa? At eleven thousand, five hundred-
One or two, I'll, I'll make both motions.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, and, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so that's for Hubbard and Rosa? Any discussion needed on that?
I'm all set.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, thank you. And then, a motion for MHR Development to pay them the nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Out of CNR.
Out of CNR.
Seal, so moved.
Second, uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Good to have that done. Just write down this. Okay. Uh, anything else about the school roof replacement projects that you have any questions about at this time?
Well, largely, we're on schedule with that, that schedule we created.
Yeah, we're on schedule.
Excellent.
Uh, they'll be, uh, working on an RFP for, they've already done, an RFP for the Clerk of the Works has already been put out there. They already have received the, uh, responses, there were two responses, and what they're going to do is set up interviews with those two individuals. And, uh, and then the committee is going to make the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. And I, uh, I think I will sit in on those interviews if I have time. Uh, but if not necessary. So.
No, I, I'm all set, the only, the only question I have, I think we were all a little bit surprised when we heard about the lack of coordination with the solar panels and, and the project, the roof project itself, but it sounds like we're on track to-
It, it is, we even talked about, um, you know, making sure that that is well-known as to where the solar is going to go, how big it's going to be, I think it was two hundred and twenty panels, it's not small.
It's major, and at one time, for instance, we had been reported, I think, Jim Rupert, when we had our bond special meeting up at the school, the town meeting, that there were going to be no new penetrations in the roof, um, regarding those solar panels, but I'm, the impression I'm having now, that's not the case, and obviously, that's got to be coordinated with the architect.
That's right.
Closely.
Yes, and let me just see here. Yeah, we talked about the weight that the roof can bear when it comes to the solar. So, the solar, um, solar person was, uh, talking about what is needed, I think we're fine. He also, uh, brought information about the, um, the potential to save money, even, even more money, uh, based upon the Federal Inflation Reduction Act. And I think Tom, of the architect, was a little bit, um, leery on that, or a little bit questioning that, because once you start adding in the federal monies, what happens is the federal money, federal, the federales will, um, look at what the state is providing, and then they will, whatever. Uh, they won't give you as much, because they'll take out what the state is, is giving us. So, uh, but he did say it might be a thirty percent reduction. And let's see what else we have here. Uh, he also talked about whether or not it would be wise for us to lease or own the solar panels. When you own them, you have to have a maintenance plan and everything, but you start really getting the payback. No, it pays for itself pretty quickly. And the estimate that he had, a rough estimate, so try not to quote me too much on this, is somewhere around six hundred and forty thousand for the solar. Where before, we were thinking it was a million. And that has to be a separate project, it can't be truly incorporated into what we're doing with the roof, it's just because of state rules, education rules. So, and he also said maintenance would probably run about two hundred dollars a month. So, we're going to get all that information, it's going to get priced, if you will, or worked with the state, two different ways, so that we know what our options are. So, that was kind of, that was new news. Let's see what else we have here. Okay, that was it for that. Uh, Discuss and Act on Ace Equipment Logging Request, Accessing the Cattle Rock Property, I'm not ready with that. That's where I have to work with Town Council. Um, but, by the way, our inland wetlands agent has submitted his resignation. He's going to-
You mentioned that at the last meeting, Bruce.
Yes.
What, what town is he going to?
He's in Pomfret. He already works in Pomfret, I think he does a, a number of different kinds of roles, but he needs, he cannot sustain
Yeah.
all the hours he works there and the hours he's working for us. The, uh, okay, finalized town building use fee schedule and Ashford Food Bank donation policy. Uh, I have not had a chance to work on that either, over the last week and a half or so. The update on the status of the Firehouse Roof Repair, Chris? You there?
I am.
Can you help me with that? Because I know you've been looking at it much more closely than me, uh, working directly with Paul.
Um, we got an estimate for completely, complete replacement.
Oh, that's right.
From a local reputable roofer for ninety-seven thousand, we put it in the capital projects for a hundred. Uh, just to cover our butts, and we are still waiting to hear from the insurance companies. And-
There's something we need to send off to Town Council to take a look at the lease.
I pulled the original lease that we signed in two thousand fourteen, to put the panels up with, using Greenback, Connecticut Green Bank money. And I sent the lease agreement and the contract we signed with the Green Bank with a couple of questions that Paul raised to counsel for his opinion to find out what our obligation is as far as keeping it, not keeping it, how much it would cost to not keep it. Um, biggest concern for the Fire Department right now is fixing the roof and being able to take the panels off, fix the roof and put the panels back on. So, that's still being investigated. We'll keep, keep you posted as soon as we know something concrete.
Good. The, uh, yes. All right, anything else about the Firehouse Roof? No questions?
Did, is, is Town Council had a chance to look at the contract with the solar company that we have, I know we were told it was only about a third of the, the whole roof that they were utilizing, but I think we had discussed maybe having, uh, our Town Council take a look at that to see if there's a liability issue there on their end?
I just sent it to him today.
Okay.
Um, all right, new business, Board and Commission Appointments, Economic Development, we are still looking to fill the regular member vacancy that expires on, uh, in February two thousand twenty-five. Uh, and, uh, inland wetlands and watercourses fill regular member vacant seat, the term of which expires June first of two thousand twenty-five, and the alternate member seat term, uh, which expires June first of two thousand twenty-seven. In addition, zoning Board of Appeals, one alternate member seat term which expires January fifth, two thousand twenty-five. And so far, I don't believe we've received any names on that. The next item here is review the request to alter the transfer station hours. Now, it was at the last meeting, I believe, that I provided an overview of, that showed what the contract, union contract says the hours are, what hours are actually being worked, and what the proposal is. I reached out to Terry
Wakeman.
And, uh, he wanted to see, again, the charge for the Transfer Station Committee. But it was his, his feeling that this is a Board of Selectmen decision, not Transfer Station Committee decision. And, uh, and I, I shared it with him, I sent it to him and everything. But he was perfectly comfortable with the, with the Board of Selectmen making a decision, or actually a recommendation to the union, should we, uh, agree that the transfer station hours could be changed as was requested by the Transfer Station Anne Casey, the Director of Public Works. So, I don't know if you still have those, it was a-
I ha, I have it sitting in front of me. My, my comfort level, and I've mentioned this the last two meetings, we've discussed this, and I have a great deal of respect for Terry, and I appreciate how long, uh, he's been on the Transfer Station Committee and has agreed to step up, uh, to be Chairman. Um, but I, I'd really like the, I thought what we were going to ask is that they have a meeting and that we get their input from the entire committee.
Well, they said, they said, he said that they didn't know when they were going to have a meeting.
Well, whenever, the last three meetings we called, and I think you were involved in recommending it a couple of times, um, I asked them to call them. You know, and they were special meetings, they don't have a regular schedule.
No.
Um, I, I'd still be much more comfortable, I mean, those, the folks that are on that, most of them have been on it for a number of years. Um, I don't think they're going to have any objection, but I, I appreciate their input, and I, besides, just from the Chairman, I'd like to hear from the whole committee what they have to say. And maybe we can address it, that- And maybe we can address it that time. I know the last meeting, Catherine, we spoke about maybe looking at some new policies or re clarification of some policies up there. Maybe we could kill two or three birds at one time with that.
Okay. Do we have particular policies that we want them to look at?
Last meeting, we talked about our board kind of discussing the potential of a couple of things.
All right.
One of them
I'll pursue them pulling together a meeting, but to tell you the truth, when I looked at minutes from their meetings, the last one I saw, saw was one that you chaired. I was wondering if it was because they weren't doing that.
The last meeting we had, we did not have a quorum.
I see.
Keith was there and I believe, I don't believe Terry was able to make it. It was some sort of an emergency or whatever. That was the last meeting I remember.
Oh, I thought his, I saw his name on there. Okay. Okay, I will push for that meeting. Typically, is what happened before you had to, you had to set up the meeting or are they?
I, I would call Terry or I'd call Keith and Keith would call Terry and they'd set up a
As long as they set it up themselves.
Keith would notice it and all of that and
All right.
You know.
I'll do that.
Terry's the chairman. Keith is the secretary. Keith Lipker.
Yeah. The okay. I will do that. Approval of use of town roads for the salute to veterans motorcycle ride on August third, two thousand twenty four. I believe you were sent the information on that.
Yep. I'll, I'll move that.
Okay, so that's
On the contingency of the proper insurance forms.
Exactly. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. And then incredibly enough, approval of use of town roads for Kitty's Spirit of Giving Motorcycle Run on June twenty second, two thousand twenty four.
Roger's turn.
I'll make that motion.
Roger and Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The appointment of full-time treasurer. Chris, we, we cross that off. Why did we cross that off? I forget. The approval of use of town roads for Ride With Me Forever Motorcycle Run on
That was the one that we don't know where it came from. And it didn't come from the American Legion, so.
Okay, that was it. Yeah. We just saw a piece of paper and it didn't have anything indicating who it was from. So we'll take that off for now. And the next thing is appointment of full-time treasurer. So as in terms of the need for the full-time treasurer. It is, I can tell you and Bill, you're probably going to say the same thing. It is virtually impossible to work with our financials. And particularly during budget time and these critical periods and not have a full-time treasurer available to us during the day. And so we have monies that were in a sense set aside in previous budgets for reorganizing the finance department. And when asked, you know, I talked with Laura in that department. And when asked, who has been there pretty much the longest at this point? And has been an excellent resource in that department for us. And I said, you know, what do we really need here? And she said, we need our treasurer full-time. It's my understanding that the treasurer is interested in that. And so what I'm looking for is a motion to hire her.
Now, this includes expanding her duties as well, right?
The expansion of the duties are things like, there's definitely expansion of the hours because this is not working. The, and really, it's the hours and the accessibility, the not having the accessibility is you, you end up waiting for Friday to have a sit-down conversation with her about anything. And I, you can't operate on a weekly basis with the treasurer, not for the things that we have. So
I'd like, I'd like to make the motion and, and then
Oh, and then we'll discuss it. Okay. So the motion
I'll make the motion to offer a full-time position of forty hours a week to our existing treasurer. Sherry Susie at our typical salary for department directors.
Right.
And I don't have that figure in front of me. I think it's sixty eight.
And change.
Something.
Yes.
But then with the new contract going into effect July first, it would be a three percent increase.
Three.
That we would offer on that.
Right.
And, and
Like, like everybody else.
Like everybody else, yes, in line with our, and it would need, everybody will need approval. Well, no, it's already in contract, so it's, it's already documented. It would be a three percent increase.
Yeah.
And I'm very happy to see that she has agreed to entertain that and happy to make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second? I don't think that Lincoln over in is ever going to forgive me.
Aye.
They love her there. So in terms of discussion about things that she would yeah.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to make a couple of quick comments. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Catherine, but our board for the past year and a half, two years, has been openly considering and, and working on reorganization of, of the finance office. I think that, that we were lucky enough to come across Sherry as on a part-time basis. And knowing that, that we were going to have to do something else. I mean, the agreement with her was she would come in on Fridays and we would pay her up to eighteen hours a week additional work time. Which although she did work it in and did a yeoman's job on that, as you say, Catherine, and I experienced personally, it's, it's, it's difficult at best not having somebody there because daily there are things that we have to take up with our treasurer and get her input and, and work. So I'm looking forward to that and I, I consider that, you know, part of our reorganization of that office that's been long overdue and happy that we have a solution for that.
I think it's a smarter solution than bringing in somebody part-time to do pickup work. It's just, that will not work. This is, this is something where you need that continuity. You need, you need that knowledge of the system and the numbers. I know that working with her on the budget, there were some numbers that we ended up correcting in the system or making sure we're entered properly. And also, you know, it was just a godsend to have the time with her to go through things.
And with, with her vast experience in that role at, at a couple of other towns, one right now permanently. I think it, you know, timing just worked out well for us, but I think it's time to take that next step. Cheryl Baker did a wonderful job there, but I don't think even her situation was the best because she was carrying two roles in that office. I think this is a better solution.
She was actually doing two very different roles in that office.
Yes.
And that's not what we need. We need the, we need the, we need it all focused on finance. Everything on finance. Okay, any other comments? Discussion?
The only other thing, Catherine, I don't know if we needed a part of the motion. Do we have a, an anticipated start date?
A potential, a potential start date is in about three weeks.
Maybe the motion could include that, that we anticipate. We, we naturally want her to give
Her start date.
For, for present employer.
I know she mentioned a start date. I'll confirm it tomorrow. We'll make sure it's
Good.
Very good. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, happily. Aye.
Many thanks.
Yes. And I'm sure, and now we can let other people know that this is what, kind of what we were working on to see if we could solve the problem that way.
Yep.
Okay. Set date for special town meeting to reallocate funds remaining in completed ARPA projects. The, I believe that Chris provided a list of funds left over from ARPA projects that have completed, and I think it was about seventy six thousand dollars. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes. Seventy four thousand, six hundred and eleven.
Six hundred and eleven. And by the way, Bill, when we were talking about some additional duties that for Sherry Susie, one of it would be to take over monitoring the ARPA. You know, it's financial in nature. It belongs to the finance.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, there, there are several things that Chris kind of took on with Cheryl's leaving and just circumstances that way. But I, and, and, you know, we'll let them work those out, but I think that's, that's only one, one of several things that
I certainly
Lead on.
Yeah, I certainly had a conversation with Sherry about that and some other things. So she's looking forward to being part of the team, this kind of
It's already part-time and part of the Be nice to have her on board.
Okay, so this, on the reallocating of funds remaining in completed ARPA projects. Actually, it's a little bit more than that. What it is, is to have the a couple of items that were originally on the capital improvement plan be put up for ARPA. One of them is, again, the website at twenty five thousand dollars. Another one is the repaving, resurfacing of the tennis courts. And I can't remember what that amount is, but I think it was somewhere around twenty. Chris, do you recall what that number is? A basketball court, I'm sorry. And another one was to reallocate some funds that were already approved that the fire department had for
Defibrillators.
Defibrillators, thank you. Where they were able to, and I'm delighted that they were, they were able to get a grant or funding elsewhere for the defibrillators that we approved. And so what they'd like to do is use the remaining approximately nine thousand dollars to purchase more defibrillators, one for the town office building, one for Norton, one for the senior center and one for senior housing. So that would be the third thing on the ARPA list for that meeting.
Do we, do we have a proposed date? Maybe we could
Yes.
Make a motion and get that behind us and to have a little more discussion.
Oh, I like that. The date would be March nineteenth. March nineteenth, I'm sorry, March eighteenth, just prior to the board of selectmen meeting. Actually, just prior to our next board of, regular board of selectmen meeting. Six thirty?
Six thirty?
Six thirty.
I'm asking you.
That's what we've done before.
That's what we've done before. It sounds pretty good. And also, it would be in person.
Voting in person only.
Yes.
Correct. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Very good. Okay, any discussion?
I do. Another item that I was thinking about when we were talking about this, do we want to consider putting in an amount for the removal of the oil tanks at the Trumpco, Trumpco House?
No, the only reason I would push back on that is we don't know what we're doing with the Trumpco house. And to my knowledge, those tanks aren't leaking. They don't have anything in them.
Have we had anybody check and confirm they haven't got anything in them?
I'll double check on that, but I'm pretty darn sure they don't.
I'd be much more comfortable if we could have somebody that could verify whether or not there's oil in them.
Yeah, all right. We'll confirm that. The only, I had something else that is the counter in the senior center. The, it needs to be relaminated. And I can't remember what the estimate was, but it was like fifty six hundred dollars. And it was Casey that went and got the estimate. So would we consider that? It's a small amount. And for God's sakes, it needs to get done. It's been like that for at least four years.
How long?
At least four years.
Four years. I thought you said forty, I was gonna
No.
I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you.
I, as a general rule, though, with the ARPA stuff, we try to get at least two prices.
We'll get another, get another price, but the yeah, the reality is, is that it's not, there's nothing in her budget around that. It's an expenditure that's a one-time expenditure. And it really needs to be done.
The other question I had, and, and, and I appreciate the list that Chris put together with us. And the last meeting, we talked about closing out certain items where we had not spent. And I believe it was discussed that, that we need to close out items where we've appropriated ARPA money in order to expend it or carry it forward.
And actually, that is what is described, if you will, in our agenda. So, Chris?
But the ones that were done by the capital improvement?
By, by the what?
Capital improvement.
No, the ones, this is for, the ones in ARPA. In other words, we've had ARPA projects or purchases where they cost less. We also know that we're going to, in all likelihood, have to get some new, newer estimates for some of the things that were already approved.
No question.
Yeah.
I, I guess my question is, and, and you'd asked Chris at the, our last meeting and got a bit of a clarification, but I was curious because there were several things that weren't on that list. Following that rationale, if it's a project, we have to close it out.
I don't know of anything, what, what she did, where she put down the things that were completed and showed what monies were either owed or left over.
I think we had one that we overspent and the rest were all underspent.
Correct. And they don't really have any, anything to do with the ones that haven't been started.
Right, everything that's, everything that's on the list with the total, the list that has the total balance of seventy four thousand, six eleven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are all projects that are completed. And were underspent or overspent.
And the net was seventy four thousand, six eleven.
Well, my, my recollection was that it was, the thought was that each project, whatever was considered a project, whatever the expenditure was considered a project within itself. And I think, Catherine, you went in and talked to Chris briefly when we had our last meeting. There were things like the bus wasn't on there, a dump truck for the public works department that we bought under ARPA. Are those projects and is there a rule with ARPA that we have to close, formally close that out by approval of a town meeting or something, or how do they have to formally be closed out?
No.
If, if the answer is yes,
No.
Then why wouldn't we put that on this town meeting to do that?
Because there's nothing in the final rule that says that you have to go to town meeting to close out a project.
Okay.
And on the list of ARPA expenditures, the DPW pickup is on there for sixty eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty. We spent sixty eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty, and there was no balance.
That's good.
So what she showed were the ones that still had a balance that were closed, or should be closed.
Right.
Were completed.
Well, if there's not Well, if there's nothing in, I'll take Chris's word for it, obviously. If there's nothing in the ARPA.
Bill, the bus is on there for a hundred and fifteen thousand, which is what we appropriated, what we spent, and there is no balance. And that's on the big.
Was it just one page, one page to your list?
Bill, those are on big doubles, double sheet spreadsheet. They're not on the list that you got for this meeting.
In your bill box.
That's the list I'm looking at right now.
The only thing that's on the list you got for this meeting are things where there are balances.
Because it was really focused, this is really focused on what has money left over or still money to pay that's already in progress or has actually has been completed.
And that's where we came up with the seventy-four thousand, six eleven?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I I I wasn't aware that there was a rule and maybe I just misunderstood it from our last meeting, but that each project had to be closed out. And that was my question. If there's no rule to that
Yeah.
in the final rule, then we don't have to do that.
Actually, I think when we were talking about it, and we probably meandered a little bit on this, I may have meandered. The the ones that we need to close out are the CNR projects that got complete are completed and have left over. And they should be formally closed out. We should provide the information to the Board of Finance and they should formally close them out. And in a perfect world, they'd be doing that at the same time that the audit was complete or was the audit was being completed. So at that point in time, because they would know exactly what was in them.
Okay.
Yeah.
You guys have answered both my questions.
Yeah, and the thing is, is what we did provide as part of the capital improvement plan was again, a report of capital authorizations that were carried forward from previous years, like for example, what we've got in revow from before. Because we put fifteen thousand in basically every year. Now, what we had in there for the fire truck that's already, you know, in progress. Southworth Drive with a steep grant. The dump truck. And those kinds of things. So, yeah.
I agree with that wholeheartedly. I just, I think somewhere down the road, it could, it's probably my perception. I got apples mixed with oranges there that we were both, what we were talking about.
Okay. All right. So setting the date for the special town meeting.
Can I add one more thing about the ARPA?
Yeah.
We have to report to the state. And they're advised of what projects are completed and what we've spent.
What does that do?
So that's how we make sure that we have formally notified, reported that we've completed the projects and how much we spent on them of ARPA money.
Now we're talking about ARPA funding projects. Okay. Well, that's fine. I I'm sure and and I'm going to assume Sherry has been following the requirements in Canterbury with what she has to do with that, right?
In Sterling.
Sterling rather. Maybe we'll all get an education.
Sterling where they're never going to let any of the three of us ever go there again.
I'm gonna find another way to go through that.
Okay, so we need to have a motion to set that date.
The motion's on the floor.
Yep. All in favor? Any more discussion? All in favor?
I.
I. Thank you. Motion approved. Tax refunds. I think we have a small one, right, Chris?
Yep, to Gene Valentine Ortega, signing statute twelve dash one twenty-nine in the amount of seven dollars and forty-five cents.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I.
I.
Thank you. Motion approved.
Catherine, could I go back just very quickly, comment? Have we got any follow-up on what's going on with the boiler at at Norton Hall?
Let me think about that for a minute. Um. I don't know what.
We were gonna look to make to see if they could.
Yeah.
They could give us a referral or.
I don't think so. I'm trying to think of.
Because I and and we don't have to do it at at this town meeting, but that was another thing I had in the back of my mind, whether that would be appropriate designation as ARPA funding.
We don't have enough money.
Okay.
You know, we're getting, now it's getting skinnied down to the point where if we, you know, we're talking about these other items and we only have the seventy-four thousand, six eleven at this point. That's not spoken for.
Yeah.
And.
Well, and we're spending fifty of that probably between.
Yeah, a little bit more than fifty.
Basketball court and the.
Yeah.
And the and the webpage. Okay, never mind. It was just a thought.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to address, and it's not in the capital improvement plan?
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we have a what am I saying? I don't think we have a responsible solution for it yet.
Well, you got your hands full with the budget right now. We all do.
Thank you. What is the life of a boiler?
Begin to talk about repairs or whatever until springtime or summer anyway on that, but.
What what is the life of a boiler, Bill?
What's the life of a boiler?
What?
What's the normal life of a boiler?
In our town?
Okay.
I don't typically you're talking twenty to thirty years, maybe forty.
Also boiler, we know. Ninety-four?
It depends on the boiler. There's it's.
Hey, can we get, can we get, you know, like a school can get funds, grants, whatever. Can we get funds from the state for?
It may be eligible. I I don't know. Chris would might be able to look it up for steep grant.
Is it also considered a historical building?
Yes.
Even though we have done things in the library, kind of remodeling in there. I don't think we changed anything.
We've done things to meet ADA requirements and I I think I don't think those disqualify us.
No, Norton Hall is on the historic register.
Okay.
Is not?
Is.
Is.
Is, I thought so.
He, um.
Just on our list to do.
There's a, there was something, if I can go back a little bit to on the fire. Uh, no, on the I'll think about this for a second. The monies on the budget on the monies for the fire department for adding staff or creating some incentives for paid staff. Jim Rupert had brought up, now I'm forgetting the name of the grant program. Chris, you know what it is through the.
It's a FEMA program. It's called the Safer Grant.
Safer Grant, that's right. On the Safer Grant, Jim highly recommended that our fire department pursue pursue that because there may be some monies available for them. I think that he said he got some monies for it.
I think that the administrative debate on that is paying for salaries with grants.
Not a good practice.
Excuse me?
Not a good practice.
That's where the debate becomes.
Thank you.
Because once that grant is over, you're looking at a hundred percent into whatever your funding source is to make up the difference and it's just a.
It would be nice if it was a gradual. It would be nice if it was a gradual thing. In other words, providing some monies one year, some different percentage of money the next year, different percentage to the point where we get it where we can absorb it.
You know, just what everybody I know was in in favor of the teacher enhancement, salary enhancement act.
Okay.
The state instituted that and we all supported it. That was a three-year grant. And then after three years, then it fell on the shoulders of the towns totally. And it had quite an impact. I think it had at least a two million impact with us. This was years ago, but those are the sort of things you gotta use caution to do with grants. Certainly can look into it. You know, we don't look into anything, but I.
It's a lot of work to put together that grant, and I think that's probably a factor in well, the lack of resources over at the fire department to do that kind of work.
Yep.
As a small aside, the, we'll be talking to the school to find out if they're going to pursue changing insurance companies for health insurance, considering the rate that we're dealing with. And when Jim was here, he mentioned that they're on the state's plan. And their rate went up, I think, three percent. It doesn't fluctuate the way that private nonprofits do.
Well, you may remember two years ago, we were going to go to the state plan. They came in with a low-ball figure.
Yeah.
We had a couple of meetings. We had a meeting there in town hall with the school was now with us. We had people from the state. We had people from the the state health program. And then the last minute, they gave us one hell of a big bump in what our cost was going to be and we ended up staying where we were, but I I still understand that there is legislature being considered and it was in committee last year to make it mandatory for all municipalities to be on the state plan.
Right.
I'm trying to get some information whether that's going to be in committee again or not. We may not have a choice.
Right. So, uh, he said, he said they're very happy with it. For one thing, what it does is it spreads your risk. And what we have is a situation where the rate went up so dramatically, partially, at least partially, if not mostly, because the school paid over a million dollars in premiums, but had over two million dollars in claims.
Two point four.
Two point four, thank you. And when you are part of that bigger kind of a amalgamation, the risk is spread and you don't have those kind of fluctuations from year to year.
Well, that's why we've always gone on their coattails and and it's benefited the town to go with the school with their plans because they have the numbers. I mean, the larger the, but it's backfired in this because over the past several years, they've had some major claims up there.
Yeah, they have. Okay. All right. Agenda items for upcoming Board of Selectment meeting, meetings. So we're going to continue with the logging request, getting a status update on that. The town building use fee schedule. The.
Transfer station policies.
Yeah, transfer station policies. And and there and there's two parts to that. One, aside from the policies, also the
Hours.
Transfer station hours. But I'd also like to have us look at public works hours because apparently they're not working. They're working the number of hours that they're supposed to according to the contract, but their start and end times are different. So I'd like to make sure that we, if we're going to pursue something with the union to change, modify the contract for one, we should probably look at whether, you know, to get it aligned with what's actually being worked.
I agree.
Some towns in the state, I mean, come the summer season, they work what's called tropical.
Tropical.
Start a little earlier so they knock off a little early.
I think our, I think our folks start at six thirty. And I think it was supposed to start at seven. So, um. All I know is they end up putting a heck of a lot of overtime in because the all the storms and things that we have and just trying to make the roads passable. Hey, uh, yeah, okay, so the, anything else for the agenda for next time?
No, but maybe if Chris could just give us a call, you know, a couple of days before she does the agenda, if something comes up, we have in mind.
Sounds good.
Or you.
We can do that. I'll I'll do that. Okay. And a motion to adjourn.
Eight twenty-one, so moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
I. I.
Thank you very much. Please be at the, please plan on joining the Board of Finance meeting on Thursday night. Seven o'clock.
Now that, that's Zoom only, right?
No, hybrid. Hybrid down.
I thought I saw something come out that said Zoom only. Maybe I dreamt it.
Uh, we'll check. We'll check.
Okay.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, Bill.
Night Roger, night Vinnie.
Hi, Bill.
Uh, can I get a copy of your write-up?
Uh, here.